So call to order the June 13th, Monday, June the 13th, 2022 Select Board Meeting Barrington. Roll call attendance.
Coach here.
Bailey here.
Mancheck here. Will you join me in pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. With view of the agenda, I think there are some changes that have been proposed and I'd like to address. Go ahead, you have it.
I have a couple if you would entertain me. First, I'd like to add unlicensed dog list and FEMA grant to the consent agenda. As letters M and N. Sorry. There's, there's no sound, there's no speakers, just.
Well, you'd have to raise your voice a little.
Oh, I'll continue to speak up. Sure thing, absolutely. So the unlicensed dog list, I'd sent details every year. This is a statutory requirement of the town clerk. The FEMA grant, this is $145,000 grant for the emergency operations center of the new town hall. So I'd like to add those to the consent agenda along with an administrative abatement for map 111 lots 10 and 11. I sent some details about that previously as well. There was a request to remove library bench and winter maintenance from the consent agenda. So we'll put that under new business as letter C. And finally, I talked to the chair and looking ahead to June 27th. We'd like to add under new business as D to cancel the June 27th, 2022 meeting. We can talk about that more under new business.
Like move the motion. Motion, move, request.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay. Very good. Public comment, there are 15 minutes of public comment. There will be a repeat later. Each person is allowed three minutes. And we will listen to your comments. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Robert Russell, 99 Tolan Road.
Thank you.
This isn't so much of a public comment as I'm submitting a warrant article to the town. Have 178 signatures. This is not public comment.
Yes, sir, it is.
Per state RSA, I'm submitting a warrant article to the town.
Good.
178 of your constituents have signed this. So I would like to submit this to you.
Okay, we'll take it.
Now, I have a question, Dan. When I told you I was doing this, you called me up and you said that you didn't think I would get 50 signatures.
I don't think I said that.
You said that on the phone.
I said you need to get.
And to the press, you, you also had told the press that per the town attorney, the same attorney that did the failed and frivolous lawsuit against my business, that this was only an advisory vote. I want to ask a question. Are you, are you trying to suppress voters to make them think it's a throwaway vote?
No, that just happens to be a fact.
So.
Thank you very.
You are for the will of the people, correct?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, point of order.
A very simple question.
This, I, you're, you're interrupt.
Will of the people.
Are you going to present your opinion? Are you going to have public comment?
Because the Democrats are all for the popular vote, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm asking you a simple question. Are you for the will of the people?
I believe, I believe you're interrupting this meeting. This is supposed to be public comment. Do you want to present your?
I've been to over 500 homes in this town.
Congratulations.
Imagine 178 of your constituents right now, standing in front of you.
Thank you.
It's not just me.
Okay, thank you, sir. If you'll present your, your petition.
Are you for the will of the people?
Yes, we're going to submit.
That was it. Thank you. You come up, Emily. May I approach?
You come, bring it on.
Okay, these are originals. I have marked each sheet, one of 20, two of 20, because there's 20 sheets.
Okay.
I've also initially. Come over here. It is a very sensitive document. It's page 120. This is page 220.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. These are supposed to be presented to the clerk.
That's not per the state law. It says to the chairman of the board.
Okay, you're presenting it. I'll take it.
No, I don't trust you, sir.
Thank you for that comment.
This is page 5 of 20. This is page 6. Page 7, 20. Page 10, 20. Page 11. Page 12, 20. 13. 14. 15. 16. 17. 18. 19. 20. 21.
Thank you, Chair. We'll give this to the supervisor of the checklist. He'll determine the validity of the signatures.
Okay, the last thing. To Barrington Board of Selectmen, at this time, I am formally requesting to be on the agenda for the Board, the Board of Selectmen meeting. I had stated on the sheet on Monday, June 27th. What is the next Board of Selectmen meeting? Because you just stated that this one was canceled. What is the date of the?
That has not been voted on yet.
Yeah, we haven't decided that. We got the.
You know, it's on the calendar.
To be discussed.
And we have choose cancel, we may vote cancel it. Thank you.
And now, what is the one after June 27th?
We haven't decided.
Okay, I'm going to continue this. I'm formally requesting to be on the agenda for the Board of Selectmen meeting on Monday, June 27th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. This is to address concerns regarding town officials not responding to questions that they pledged to answer appropriately during a recorded public session on 11 April, 2022, where I addressed the.
Sir, your three minutes are up. Thank you.
Regarding the failed lawsuit and frivolous lawsuit against my.
Name and address, sir?
Bay Tactical. Not only have these public officials, Town Administrator Connor McIver and Board of Selectmen Chairman Dan and.
Name's George Bailey and I live.
Failed to provide adequate answers, but they have failed to respond in any request to the great majority of the questions I have asked. Further, I wish to address the serious issues about the town's investigation into the allegations I have brought forward. As a registered voter in the town of Barrington, I form part of the legislative body of the town government. With these two officials ignoring my outright questions, this forces me to ask these questions as part of an agenda in a public session.
Thank you, sir.
Public servants outright ignore my requests, this brings up potential constitutional issues where I can only seek relief in a public session. What is the next date after Monday, June 27th? What is the following date?
Not determined yet. Are there any other?
Dan, I'm not walking away. What is the next date?
Mr. Air.
Dan?
I, I just gave you the answer.
Dan, what is the following date?
My name's Daniel E. here.
Dan.
I'm here not to grant. I'm here to make my public speech.
And what is the next date?
I said.
I am requesting to be on the agenda. Will you put me on the agenda?
No.
And you can.
Yes, I can.
This is my constitutional right. You have, you have ignored all my emails. In fact, you haven't even responded.
I haven't even received your emails. Mr. Ayers.
That's not true.
Mr. Ayers.
That is not true. I have sent all these emails to you and Connor, and you have not even hit reply. You are lying. You are, why don't you say port of.
Sir, your time, excuse me.
Your time is up.
I am asking to be on the agenda for the next.
There's another public comment in the meeting.
I am asking.
And you have not followed procedure.
For the next Board of Select. Do you understand this is a?
If you would like to speak again, you may request it at the second.
I am requesting it.
At the second public session, you have three minutes.
You're not listening.
Yes, I am listening.
Have to let me be on the agenda. This is a mere formality, Dan.
No, I don't have to let you on the agenda.
And this is a cover up. Dan, you are covering up.
There is.
You just stated you did not get my emails.
That's correct.
You did not get a single one of them.
I, the ones I got, I responded to.
You absolutely did not respond to them. So these are part of public record. And you are saying in front of all these people, in front of your constituents, you said you did not receive these emails, the ones I'm talking about.
I don't know which ones you're talking about, the ones I have received.
Talking about all the ones you ignored. I believe it's 10 emails over two and a half months, sir. Dan, I.
I haven't received 10 emails.
If you believe in transparency, you will put me on the agenda. You obviously do not believe in transparency.
I cannot put you on the, excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Please explain.
In this meeting.
Yes. Mr. Ayers, Mr. Ayers now has.
First of all, your time has expired for you to speak. That's being a gentleman.
Placing me on the agenda.
And then the second part is you've asked to be on the agenda. We have not made a decision.
He said no. He did make a decision. George.
Excuse me, you're talking.
The chairman.
You are talking to me.
Dan.
It's not the.
George.
Question.
George.
Thank you very much.
George, the chairman.
What I am saying to you, sir.
No.
Sir, what I am.
Hey Jim, do you want to say something? Because you guys never speak up.
I'm running this meeting. Your time is up.
Please.
You are being obnoxious and we don't need to have you here doing that. You are dismissed.
I'm the one being obnoxious.
You are dismissed, sir.
I'm.
Yes.
Sir, you are dismissed.
I came here.
You are dismissed.
78.
You are dismissed.
Thank you.
You're making a good show, but you are dismissed.
You presented this as.
Stand by your edge that you will not place me on the agenda. Is that correct?
I didn't say that I will.
You said no.
I said decide. There's no agenda.
You stated no.
I think he said he doesn't have. Let me remind everybody, if you're going to speak here, you have to be a resident or a taxpayer of this town for other pieces of property.
All right, Mr. Ayers.
Thank you.
In writing.
Please give it to the clerk.
I just want to state, I'm running for selectmen and you guys need to get ready for some change. Okay? We're going to clean this town up.
Sir, we don't need threats. Please sit down.
And you need to start responding to my emails.
Please sit down, sir. You.
A threat, a threat to run for office.
Listen, yeah.
A threat to run for office.
Chief, would you take care of this forest, please? We're having a disturbance and he won't settle down, please.
Threatened by somebody that wants to run for office.
Three minutes are up. I'm, I'm drinking my public comment. I'm a taxpayer here. Can you please recognize that too? Okay, Mr. Air.
My name's Daniel E. here. I live at 33 Old Concord Turnpike. I am a former select person. I ran the people's voice. And so. I've heard many complaints. I've heard them all. And so. This is a sad day for me. I'm here for my public comment. I'll do three minutes, that's it. My personal thoughts and feelings as a taxpayer. The tax, the town has enabled two-way tackle and rob Brussels. It's sad to hear he wants more of taxpayers' money. Codeenfor, Codeenfor has informed the visit was in violation of town ordinance and was told steps to correct them. By going to the ZBA, he admitted he was looking for a, a bigger, better location. John Hudson's gave him on our taxpayer dollar, a list of properties and other buildings available. The road agent installed four loads of gravel, plus their mine is in a right-of-way for parking at 99 Tolan Road. The police chief waived the parking orders in the right-of-way. Driveway permits are allowed for access to a certain point in the right-of-way. Not the whole property line. And there's no parking on the causeway or roads with other, without the consent of the select board or its agent. There's 160 miles of private roads in this town. I'm sure other taxpayers would love to have four loads of gravel installed for free. Any contractor putting up orange cones at a right-of-way has to post signs on the cones in the right-of-way for the purpose. You just can't put a lien on the side of the road. The town finally enforced the ordinance after a long time, as the visit grew and added more employees and containers. Courts inform, courts will inform anyone, they have to exhaust all local town steps. And one of them is go to the ZBA. If that need to be appealed, the case, once that is done, courts will hear the case. Why are we having a special town meeting at the taxpayers' expense when it should be held in a court of law? Anyone who's collecting their state retirement, government pension, and running a full-time business complains about money and in the day of age, I don't understand. Stock market's falling. 401 retirement, retirement plans are dropping, dropping. Cost of living fuel, food and supply chain have a, have a complaint. The time of year, people paying their property tax and trying to budget money to stay alive the rest of the year. I've heard it all. I've seen it all. Town enabled this situation. If you guys don't see that, I only had one vote. I spoke my mind. I had personal persecution against me, death threats, everything. Now that I'm healthy, you see, people going on, I don't know how much longer I got. You know what? I'm still here to make a stand. And what, this is a shame, I saw you earlier. I think my three minutes is up. That's all I'm allowed. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Any other public comment? Ms. Vasquez.
I just wanted to give you.
Can we have your name and address, please?
Um, my name is Cassandra Lebec at 24 Emerald Drive, Barrington. I just wanted to give you all an update. I gave Connor a copy of all the committee conference reports on all the bills. And also at Stratford County, they are looking to upgrade some of their buildings, the jail and some of the other places. They also have a future plan to help with the housing crisis we have here in New Hampshire and especially in the Seacoast. That would be to add apartment complexes onto like strip malls, so that way they can help those local businesses and help make sure that people can get affordable housing here in the Seacoast area. So if you have any questions, I will.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everything you've done for us. I have a question. Considering the strip mall. Right now, presently, we have some towns that have businesses downstairs in the main street and they have business slash apartments available upstairs. What's, what's going to prevent us from going back into default or to almost non-use like some of the towns are? What's going to prevent that? Has that been part of the discussion?
Um, I'm not sure. What, I, we just got the report from the commissioners at the last meeting. It's still up for discussion of what's going to happen and they're still trying to look into all the different kinks with that. It's just like a future plan that they have that they want to implement.
So, so if I, if I may ask you, could you come back down in the future and give us the update?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? The other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Paul Mosteller, 83 Washington Street. Kind of discuss some old business, which is on your agenda tonight. H. Copiers. Maybe the town administrator can answer some of these questions, but was that put out for bid? I understand Seacoast is a local business. Has the, has there been bids put out for the copiers?
Be happy to answer if it's the board's wish. The, so the town has a standing contract with Seacoast Business Machines, which is one of the allowable items under the purchasing policy to continue the relationship. So this was not put out to bid, but is consistent with the purchasing policy.
Okay, 347 per month. Is that per copier or one copier?
It's total.
Uh, how many copies per month?
So it's a separate services contract. This is for the device itself. Seacoast Business Machine structures their contracts. We actually have like an umbrella contract for the town. And we have overages that amount to a couple hundred dollars a year, and we try to make adjustments to reflect that. So it's not per copier, if that makes sense.
How long is the lease?
The lease is five years.
Can you explain a little bit about the, the blanket using this contractor?
Yeah, so it's called the non-appropriation clause. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, is there a?
So a non-appropriation clause is required by state statute for any agreement that the select board makes over a year. And that's because the select board can't bind the town for more than a year. So a non-appropriation set clause says that in the event the town doesn't appropriate the funds to pay for this lease, the town has no penalties. The town doesn't lose anything, doesn't have to make a breach payment or anything like that.
Is there a price allowance on less than 5,000? Is there, is there a dollar amount on that?
On the non-appropriation clause?
Yeah.
The dollar amount is a dollar. There, there's no, if we don't have the funds to pay for it, the non-appropriation clause would kick in, no matter what the amount is.
We have a new board here that's selectmen. Have they, do they understand that? The realm of the lease? I mean, if they're, if the prior board had discussed this, now this is a new agenda. Your agenda says 2020, now we're 2022.
It's a great point. Yeah, so this, this select board, the five that are with us, well, they're not all with us tonight, but we've done a couple of leases with non-appropriation clauses and gone over them in detail on the regular agenda, not the consent agenda, but it's a good question.
Uh, second question, the polling pads. We have four of them. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Was that a grant? Did, was it a budget line item? How, how do we?
It was a budget line item.
Okay, and was it presented to the board, the prior board?
Yes.
Then it, has there been a, a third-party penetration test on those polling pads? Because are they connected to the internet wirelessly?
No, so these devices are connected to each other and that's it. And so that's so they can all maintain an updated checklist. And so something that's interesting in New Hampshire right now with the poll pads, and it's, it's important to make the distinction, nothing about the actual voting process has changed at all. It's simply the registration process when you check in. And state statute requires that there exists only one checklist, only one voting checklist. And so how that requires municipalities to handle an election is to break it up by section. Barrington has traditionally done it by alphabet and have one person, and the problem with that is the line for whatever your last name is, is always long when you get there. And all the rest of them are empty. The poll pads, what they allow the staff to do, the election workers to do, is any station can take any person and it's all updated concurrently. But the interesting thing about New Hampshire right now is New Hampshire hasn't, the Secretary of State's Office hasn't authorized use of just the poll pads. The town has to maintain a still, a physical checklist, just like we do before. But the difference is we have one staff member doing that, one election worker doing that, and the others are dispatched to the check-in stations. So they all talk to each other and that's why the town's technology committee reviewed the white papers for the security of the devices. And it met their satisfaction. The town also clued in an outfit that we had a cybersecurity audit with la, last year. I think they ended at the beginning of 2021 to make sure.
Is there a report available?
No, not publicly. So the, the details of the poll pads and the cybersecurity audit are all not subject to release under the right-to-know law, simply to protect the towns, protect the town from vulnerability from any cybersecurity attack. So the select board and the technology committee is familiar with the details, but those aren't details we make publicly available.
ROI on the polling pads to the less people at the polling booths, is there?
So we paid for the poll pads the first year with a reduction in election worker wages. So if you look at the 2021 versus the 2022 budget for election wages, the reduction, the amount that we reduced bought all the poll pads. So we'll continue to see savings.
I know my time's up.
Yes, sir. I have one thing to say, please. Would you please, while on that last question that Mr. Marcelo asked, could you just discuss the training that was given to everybody prior to the use and everything else? Well, that would be helpful if you'd do that, please.
So they had, but prior to the election, the first election with the poll pads, all the election workers were brought in for a special training from the company and representatives from the state to make sure they understood the system and how to use it.
Okay, last question. Rock ledge, the 124 acres, was there a discussion on extending that one more year for them to do whatever they were going to do on that 124 acres?
That conversation's still ongoing. No decisions have been made yet.
Any other public comment? Public comment? Anyone watching from home, you'll raise your hand. Oh, sorry. Grant, please.
I'm Ken Grant. I live on Paca Mountain Road. I I've, I became aware of this situation with the, the Tolan Road. And I guess I'm concerned that it would be getting to a point where there's just something that's going to trigger a special meeting considering the cost. I, I feel I'd like to see equal treatment when there have been planning board approval for things and zoning board approval for things, but, but after that, the town, I think, has a duty to see that, to make sure those, those things don't become a violation. And I specifically am pointing out this horse ranch down on Beauty Hill Road. You go by there, you see a island created with earth or whatever, that wood chips, right in the middle of the wetlands with all these animals around and there's a several thousand square foot building that was generated there for, for horse, I, I believe mostly horses and stuff. I, I think that it has to be looked at, that even though there's been approvals for this, that this is creating a certain threat and, and certainly most people today, the first thing they jump on, if it's, if it's not electric cars, it's an environmental threat. And so, and I don't mean to cause that, for the town to think that we need electric vehicles that they want and they buy them themselves, but, which is a waste. But anyway, so I, I'm for seeing this equal treatment. And when it's, and it should be recognized that there's a, there's a real serious problem that has potential of, of being that threat, especially to the, what the jurisdictional wetlands and that's, I don't know how that arena ever got to be approved in that location. It is, Ed Beal's barn was not nearly that big and, and he certainly wasn't using it for horse, you know, to livestock and stuff. But I would like to see even treatment. There are other cases too, where it just seems to go unnoticed when these violations are occurring. They certainly didn't go unnoticed when a town employee wanted to come after me and I, I spent several thousand dollars after being in the same place for 18 years and being a self-employed contractor for having a tractor parked there and a truck that, that I, I did. It cost me several thousand dollars to get to get my head right with the town, according to the town's vision of it. And so here you have a number of instances where there should be equal and even-handed treatment meted out when these violations are occurring.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just in general, and Mr. Grant, the, just want to make sure you catch it in case you're interested. So the, the select board's policy for code enforcement is by complaint. And that has its benefits and it has its drawbacks. One of the benefits is that the, the town applies the zoning ordinance and code enforcement very simply when a complaint is made. Complaints made, the town investigates. If the code enforcement officer feels that there's a violation, he pursues it. So the town doesn't go out looking for violations and so that it might be that residents, especially in a specific neighborhood, might have concerns about something and wonder why the town isn't doing anything about it. And a lot of times, the reason the town isn't doing anything about it is because somebody hasn't complained. So you mentioned a property specifically. If you're interested, I would encourage you to make a formal complaint so the building inspector, code enforcement officer can look at that property specifically and come to a conclusion about potential violation.
I think that position is by the citizen and taxpayer is well presented right here and it's on record.
If, if you'd like it to be taken that way?
You feel free to take that as a, from 10 grand, you know?
Yes, sir. Understood.
It's funny that, very quickly, it's funny that when I was, when I had, had these issues created for me by a town employee, that just the hearsay to the, to David Price of the Wetlands Bureau issuing a letter that I may have wetlands on my property and I had to prove that I didn't. He didn't have to prove that there was. I had to prove that I was free of wetlands and, and that was part of the several thousand dollars it cost me to hire professionals. Feel free and welcome to take the citizens' complaint right here tonight.
Understood. Thank you, sir.
On record, is it not?
It is, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that was your intent.
Any other comments? You're watching from home. We've gone over a little bit. If you want to comment, you can raise your hand, wait for recognition. You're on telephone, it's star six and we will recognize you. Don't see anything.
I don't see anything electronically, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right. Moving on. Public hearing, the school board representative is not here. I'll report later about school board meeting. Um, public hearing. Acceptance of state administered American Rescue Plan Act funds. Local, locally, locality equipment purchase program. Have, anyone have questions? Okay. Uh, then we could, if we could, is there any public comment on accepting these funds from the state? Fifty thousand dollars support the purchase of AADs and a power cut. I see no public comment. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Mr. Gibson move to accept that money?
Could I have a second?
I'll second it, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Do we need separate, separate motions for each one? All right.
Uh, the State Department of Justice, hundred thousand dollar support, purchase in support of new laptop computers out of ARPA funds. Are any comments? Any public comments? Don't see any electronically. Don't hear any on the phone. Mr. Bailey?
I'd like to make a motion to accept and expend the, uh, state administered ARPA funds through the State Department of Justice in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars.
Mr. Gibson, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. State Department of Health and Human Services, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Recreation Department applied for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to support of a multi-passenger van in support of young adult programming. Are there any comments, questions? Sir? Yes, Mr. Bailey?
I have a comment on this. I think it's a worthwhile thing. It's about time that, uh, uh, we took a step forward here and included more people with our, uh, rec programs. And I'm grateful for the, uh, rec director for making sure that this, uh, funds were applied for.
And this one is still outstanding. We're waiting to hear and answer back. We're holding the hearings. The hearings have to be noticed in the paper. Um, in order to accept and expend any funds over ten thousand dollars. Um, and so the, just so you have that information.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other comments or questions? I don't see any electronically. Mr. Bailey?
I'd like to make a motion, make a motion to accept and expend the state administered ARPA funds through the State Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Should we, should we amend that to say, if approved by the state?
That's okay. Yes.
If approved by the state.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Consent agenda has amended.
Motion to accept the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Hey, new requests for signatures.
That passed on the consent agenda.
Oh, that's right. That was seat. Sorry, guys. F and G and except for that. Appointments. I don't think there are any.
No, sir.
Okay. Staff reports. Mr. McIver?
Thank you here. We're at the first meeting in June. I'd like to, uh, recognize the work anniversaries, those employees that were hired sometime uh, years ago in the month of June. Uh, starting with our longest serving employee, Timothy Booty in the fire department for twenty-seven years. Uh, Scott, Scott Young, currently a part-time police officer in the police department, uh, for twenty-four years. Katie Perry, the police administrative assistant for seventeen years. Monica Poitras in the recreation department for twelve years. John Huckins has, uh, been building inspector code enforcement officer for nine years now. Eric Baker, currently a police sergeant, has worked in the town for five years. Jacob Cummings in the fire department for five years as well. Donald Morse, currently our canine officer, uh, has served in the town for four years. Tiffany Cottle, uh, municipal office administrator, uh, for three years. Christopher Cook, the custodian in the library for two years. We hired our human resources administrator, Deborah Wood, one year ago this month. And Sam Janelle joined the fire department one year ago as well. So certainly appreciate the tenure of those employees and look forward to, uh, more tenure in the future. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair. That isn't on the agenda.
Thank you very much. And thank you to those employees for your good service. Ms. Cottle, do you have anything for us?
I have a repurchase deed from app one twenty-six, lot fifty-five, and, um, the warrant for unlicensed dogs. That was just approved.
Thank you.
We'll sign them.
Thank you.
Moving on to old business, crack ceiling award update. I think there's a letter in your packet. Mark Morrow explaining, um, concerns about the, uh, crack ceiling. Uh, that I want to modify that, uh, the motion that we made. It was here that we don't quite need to contract. Any comments or questions?
That's the, that's the one that failed to meet the standards?
Yeah.
Okay. I gotta find it, but I know I read it.
We certainly, certainly apologize for the confusion, but this was, uh, our first year, uh, you were doing crack ceiling. And so, uh, took a closer look at the details as we were, um, signing the documents, signing the documents and noticed. So glad we caught it, uh, but please accept our apologies.
How many bids do you typically get? I mean, this is all new territory, but for crack ceiling, are there many people doing it? Is there a lot of bids that come in there?
It, it depends. It varies widely. The, honestly, the biggest challenge we're experiencing right now is so many contractors in every industry are so busy uh, that we're really having to fight to track down bids. Uh, on the consent agenda, we just approved spending a hundred thousand dollars to buy police laptops and other items. And we ended up awarding that to a couple of different vendors because we couldn't get everything in one place. Um, and so, uh, having some competition is, is good. Uh, we'd always love to see more competition. We do everything we can to attract it, uh, but everybody's just so busy. I think one of the things with the crack ceiling that might have held us back a little bit too, is simply the quantity. Um, where, you know, it has to be worthwhile for folks to come to town, do, um, everything they need to and go out. So we, we will learn, but, um, it'd always be good to see more competition.
In this case, there were only two. Any other questions? And we could entertain a motion to redo this.
I'll make a motion to accept the new contract.
Okay. Crack ceiling?
Yeah, crack ceiling.
Yeah. We'll rescind the, the previous award that we made the last meeting.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, Daniel Cater Road gravel and vegetation discussion, uh, again, in your package, you've got a letter Mark Morrow to the Conservation Commission and the Airs Lake Association. Are there any questions about that?
Yeah, I had, I had a question. Um, not on, no, not on his letter. It, oh, yes, I did. The only thing I have on the letter is the, uh, smaller, uh, uh, crushed stone going to affect anybody's tires? I know it's an off-the-wall, but that's just a question I have.
I don't think so. And it's being applied to other roads as well.
Yeah, well, I, I, I just happened to see it here and I wanted to ask the question. So that was it. Thank you. I gotta find out where I put my, I had notes on it, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that definitively, but I think.
I think they're going to use it on all gravel roads.
Yes, I saw, I read that also, but it's, this is the first time, I guess.
I, I've seen it.
Eight and a half came up in front. So I wa- I just wanted to ask that question if it would affect the tires or not. So that was it. Thank you.
Yeah. Have we received any reply from either Conservation Commission or the Airs Lake?
No, very tight turnaround. So I wouldn't have anticipated it.
Didn't think so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Jim has his hand up.
Yes, I'm sorry, Jim. I didn't.
I got a question. If we put down gravel now, what, what is the yearly maintenance going to look like on this since we've touched it once? Do, do, do we know that?
So to be, to clarify, I don't think the road agent is planning to do anything, um, beyond what the regular gravel road maintenance would be. It's just he's using a different material that he's expecting to have better results from in hardening the road. Um, so his hope is that using this material when it's necessary, not, you know, creating a problem. But when it's necessary, using this material will result, result in less work being required on the road. It won't need to be graded as much, uh, the, because the material won't move around as much. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay.
One question there is everybody's aware, we have a warranty easement deed up on there and it's under, uh, conservation easement. Putting the, uh, stone in the front part of the, uh, uh, road, that's partially there, that's partially under the easement. Does that put us in any, uh, does it put us on the else with easement if we put it on the beginning of the park where the easement is there for them?
I can tell you that the highway department will only be working within the town's right of way.
Thank you very much. That's all I need to hear.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Eric, you have a professional comment?
It's called a sharp sand. It's, it's no silt, um, jagged, um, material that, uh, he's going to use for, uh, treatment, winter treatment traction control in the winter and also introduced to the gravel roads.
Right. So that is commonly used with Bondstead, uh, the towns and stuff. And then you, it doesn't hurt cars and stuff. And then you have, then you can grade it out in the spring. It's, there's a half dozen towns in there that use it.
Right. Yep. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, because it, it's, uh, three eighths clean stone chips.
Right.
That's what maybe, then, okay, thank you.
Thank you. That further defines outside of my expertise. Thank you. Uh, all right. Moving on. New business. Regarding the noise ordinance.
Okay. So I provided you all the details. Uh, essentially the town passed a noise ordinance in two thousand and one. The select board amended the noise ordinance in two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen. Ultimately, the select board has no authority to amend an ordinance unless when that ordinance was passed, they gave the select board the authority to amend it. Um, which makes the two, the two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen amendments null and void for all intents and purposes. Truth be told, the ordinance as it's written now is pretty difficult for the police department to enforce anyways. I won't speak for the chief, but a lot of times in a situation where, um, somebody calls in a violation of the noise ordinance, if any charges are brought up, it's typically not on the noise ordinance. It's, um, something else. And so I think, uh, we've got these lemons. I think making lemonade is appropriate. And so between now and the March twenty twenty-three election, um, what I'd propose, if the select board is interested, is rewriting the noise ordinance, uh, to potentially integrate any of the two thousand and sixteen or two thousand and seventeen amendment. Um, but also work with the police chief to make sure it's something that can be enforced and meets the current intent of the town. I will tell you that this topic, that this topic, uh, comes up every year around this time because the noise ordinance, um, provides a waiver, a blanket waiver from July first to July sixth for fireworks. And so, you know, July second through July seventh, we'll get calls, hey, my neighbors launching fireworks. Isn't this against the noise ordinance? We inform them that it isn't. So there's always, um, around this time of year, uh, calls to amend the ordinance. Uh, but it, it should be amended at a meeting. Please, chief.
So we've had a lot of calls about this. This is a hot topic. It is every year, all year long for different reasons. The, the requirements for the decimal levels are basically useless. We may have a decimal reader somewhere at the police department. If we do, it's twenty years old. Well, actually, I'm sorry, it was amended in what, twenty eleven? So a decade old, it's never been certified, like any instrument that we need to enter into evidence, it would need to be certified on a regular basis. The decimal readings just don't make sense. As the TA referred, we actually fall back on the disorderly conduct statute and write it under the criminal code, which is much, much easier to enforce because essentially it says any noise heard from outside the property line, blah, blah, blah. Um, if I were to make a suggestion and going forward, if you're interested, there are several other communities that have very good noise ordinances with that style wording that we could certainly follow along with, which would put us in line with state statute and also be something that the courts have upheld year after year after year after year after year for these other communities.
Yeah, this one that was, that was drawn up back when I was a youngster.
The, the original one, I can tell you is still on typewriter. I, I think the amended one may have been done on computer, but I have typewriter version in my cruiser bag still.
Back then, there were some individuals who have since passed.
Yes.
That wanted to have, uh, no fireworks at all on July, no fireworks allowed at all in town, whatever.
I'm still fully in favor of, of the immediate variations that we give as a town.
I think so.
I just want to do away with the language that is essentially unenforceable. If we're, it, it's just like a policy. We shouldn't have a policy internally that we're not following. The same stands for our ordinances. If we can't and aren't enforcing our ordinance, we should take a serious look about making them fit the situation that we're in. Is my opinion.
I think it'd be useful if you could present us with some of that language. That might be a useful thing. And then we can bring that to liberty session.
Done. I'll get a couple of different variations to report out. And if you'd like, I can combine them into one, but I'll get you something to look at. Absolutely.
Yeah. One that you think you can enforce.
I, there's one I know for a fact I can enforce that has been done multiple times and they're Kalia accredited agency. So would be happy to do so.
Thank you, chief.
Any other discussion, any other questions? I'm sorry. I didn't mean to dis.
Without objection, we'll get working on that. And, um, I would also recommend that when we do bring that forward to the next select board meeting, maybe we hold a separate public hearing to invite input from residents. That'll give the chief and I and Tiffany, uh, something to tell folks when they call and have concerns about the ordinance that, hey, later this summer, we're going to hold a public hearing and review the noise ordinance language. If you're interested in providing input, uh, you're welcome. You're invited to that meeting.
Do you need a motion for that?
Consensus. I'm comfortable. Thank you.
We need more firework days.
Listen, that'll be part of the conversation.
Labor Day.
They, they turned around and they just said.
Thanksgiving.
They just said those two were null and voids.
Thirtieth wedding anniversaries. That was the last waiver I provided to the noise ordinance. Somebody's thirtieth wedding anniversary. By default, if you make it to thirty years, you get a waiver from the noise ordinance. Yeah.
Okay. Cool. Um, Barrington Municipal Parking, uh, any question, any, have you had a chance to go through this?
Mr. Chair, if I may, just for the community's benefit, I trust that the select board has seen this, but I just want to give a quick overview. So the town, um, down at the intersection of nine and one twenty-five, the, there is a common misconception that the paved parking area that's on the north side of Route nine, adjacent to where the village barn is, is municipal parking at Park and Ride. That's how folks have used it for years. It's actually private property. It has been private property. Um, it sold in February of this year and continues to be private property. Um, the, the misconception is grounded loosely, in fact, because the town does have municipal parking at that intersection. But it's the gravel parking area, which is adjacent to the elfmade side of the Kales Country Store building. And so that area is actually leased from the state. It's part of the state's right of way. Um, the state's property actually goes right all the way up to the steps, uh, those side entrance steps to the elfmade portion of the Kales Country Store. And you can see a stone wall in the back, which continues down all the way to, it's, it's wide to that extent, all the way to where the depot is. And so that's where the intended location for municipal parking was back in nineteen sixty-eight. And so given the activity on the paved parking area, I think it's the right time, um, for the town to invest a little bit in this municipal parking area, establish a little bit more, make sure residents know that this is where parking is in that area. And so, uh, the road agent and I have had a chance to talk about it. He's gone out and looked at it. Uh, what we propose for the select board's consideration, don't need to make a decision tonight, but if you feel comfortable, you certainly can. Like to get some signs made up, simple municipal parking, make it clear that that's public parking and people are welcome to park there. Um, like to bring in some gravel and grade the property, um, in collaboration with the state, uh, ease the transition onto the paved portion of Route nine there. Uh, also clear out some of the vegetation. Uh, also clear out some of the vegetation. Uh, the only big tree we're thinking about taking out is that big dead tree that's right at the entrance. The rest is just small brush stuff that's overgrown, uh, but we'd like to get in there and clear that out, um, and establish a little bit more of an open and clearly defined parking area. Uh, and that's really all right now. Um, there's not to say there might be calls in the future to do more, um, for a parking area down there. The, uh, but that's all we're asking for right now. So happy to answer questions, or if you feel, you're prepared to make a decision, happy to entertain that as well.
Did we get the state to give us some signs? Are there signs to indicate this park and ride?
There are no signs. If we wanted signs, I'm proposing buying signs, um, but in conversation with the state because we'd have to still place them in there right away.
With the.
Maybe after select board comment?
Can you wait?
My question is, what's gonna happen right now with all the equipment and trailers under there?
There aren't.
They're on the.
Across the street. They're not across the street. That's why I asked the question. I drove by there tonight.
Oh, really?
There's a trailer and there's the other, uh, four-wheel machine.
Uh, if the select board, uh, were to authorize what we're proposing, the first step would be to get in touch with the property owners and tenants of that building and let them know what our plans are. Um, so I suspect that any issues could be resolved then.
Okay, and then my, my next question is that if that is transpired, we're gonna be responsible for snow removal of salt and sand? Whatever's necessary to take care of that, is that correct?
I would propose that would be the case.
Thank you, sir. I'm all done. Thank you. Sorry to bother you.
No, that's great.
Do you have an idea on how far we're gonna go? You have the highlighted yellow here. Are we gonna go about halfway? Are we just gonna poke in a quarter of the way? Cause I, I feel like if we're gonna make a move, you know?
Make it worthwhile.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a great question. We're really proposing to keep the scope pretty narrow right now. So if you're familiar, the, where the vegetation stops kind of at the end, it's overgrown on either side. It necks down quite a bit. We're really only proposing to go as far as the, the vegetation stops and just widen it. Uh, make it kind of full width, if you will, the whole way. We're not proposing to go any farther now. Um, we could certainly look into that, but I think, uh, based on the scope that we're proposing, um, keeping it limited might be a good first step.
I would just ask that you can get the, the board a, you know, that kind of like what you have here with the pitcher, but with the area that you were talking about clearing, so everybody can see it, cause some people, you know, had a good hands-on, but some might wanna see it from here.
Absolutely.
I, I have a concern, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, uh, the, I don't know who bought the property across the street. I don't wanna know. But whoever bought the property across the street can, in fact, stop the, uh, park and ride. That piece, and if they stop the park and ride piece, going along with what Jim just said about how much we're gonna have here, how many cars are there? Usually see what, seven, eight, nine cars at times for the park and ride, usually it, that's from me driving by and seeing them. And so it, are we planning on those seven or eight, nine cars being across the street? And then also for, uh, customer parking, are we required to pay, to have customer parking for, uh, the store? Because of, because, you know, in the past, we used to, so that, that's it, you know, so. And then the, uh, part of the snowmobile trail comes that way also.
Yep.
So, and it goes across the street, so, so the way the, the cross the street is done now, and I don't wanna know who the owner is, he's blocked off the trail. So did he cancel the trail?
No, the trail is actually going on the right-hand side of the, the two old barn buildings.
And so the trails commit, not trails committee, but the people that do the trails would have to clean, clear that up a little bit, so like.
Yeah, I, I think.
All right, that's, so that, that's what my, that's what my concerns are that, that are there. And also the other concern is if we have the park in too close to the building, how's it gonna affect Fire Chief and his crew? You wanna, I.
Yeah, I'll answer a couple of your questions, and then Fire Chief has something he wants to say. So first, the, I don't know the number of spaces, but our intent would be to make sure that there's enough room for people that had used the parking lot across the street to be able to use that one.
All right.
The use of this area isn't changing. People park there now. To your question about do we have a responsibility to provide business parking, we absolutely do not. The, the only, what I would say is the stated goal of this area is to make public parking available in the vicinity of Route nine and one twenty-five, whether it's a park and ride for people carpooling or commuting, whether it's people parking there to patronize the businesses. My personal opinion is that that doesn't matter to the town, but making it available is what matters.
I, I ask those questions and keep them further used, just to make it on the record is exactly what we're trying to do with it and what it's for.
Understood.
I wasn't trying to be that other three-letter word, but, uh, I, I did a good job of it, so that's how I was there. Thank you.
Mr. Walker.
You laugh.
Mr. Walker, please.
I, I'm, just to help clarify some of Sigmund Bailey's questions, I'll give you a little back history of that property. For a number of years, the park and ride signs were in that parking lot, paved parking lot across the street. That property has been, always been privately owned, and signs were placed there erroneously by the state of New Hampshire. When the Horton sold Kales Country Store, they retained that piece of property. And Mrs. Horton was advised by her attorney that you need to close that parking lot. Don't leave that open. It's not, it's private property. It's not a park and ride. So she advised the state, the state removed the signs advertising it as a park and ride, and basically what she did was shut the parking lot off to limit liability to her as, she didn't necessarily tell people they couldn't park there. She just didn't advertise the fact that it, people could park there. So that's really the back history behind that, that the park and ride signs erroneously, whatever number of years ago, were, were erroneously put on the wrong piece of property by the state of New Hampshire, and they were moved at the request of the current property owner. Or previous, should say.
Going along with what Jim said, I'm gonna blame you, is that if we have a smaller area, where is the off, uh, parking going to be for, uh, the store? I mean, if, if, just suppose that's shut off, now are we gonna have to go back a second time and make that, that parking lot bigger to accommodate? I know we're not worried about the parking, but, so what happens? Everybody gets ticketed, and now we become the, that three-letter word again? So I don't, uh.
Bear are you concerned people will be ticketed?
If, if they turn around and they fill up the, the, the three parking areas that are on that side of the road with Kales, and they start parking either in the road or, uh, up against the, uh, grass down further, you know, I would have a problem with that because the gentleman, the person that owns the, uh, piece across the street, they shut it off. This, you know, anyway, that, that's how I feel about it. I just don't think that, uh, you know, we're doing, we're making this big enough.
Yes, thanks, Rick.
Well, since we're on this, Mr. Eric has.
That's real quick. You could utilize the parking right up the street at the old school. Be no expensive tax payers. There's fuel, fuel company located there. There'd be no problem to anyone. It won't cause future problems. Start ready to go right now. As a designation, all you have to do is designate it as an area.
I don't think we're ready to make it. Since we're not ready to make a motion.
That's okay. I'll get a more defined, um, locale for what will be upgraded, um, or specific scope.
See what we're gonna do, so we get an exact scope.
Perhaps consider other funds. Or project fund, sure.
Could be. Honestly, we don't expect it's gonna cost that much. We'll probably have to hire somebody to take that big tree down, and it'll be material, but we'll do it all in-house. And so I, I hope it wouldn't even cost that much.
Yeah, if, if the board is to decide to make it bigger.
Oh, right.
We can do.
That might be a good use.
Absolutely. Okay, I will bring more information back at our next. Thank you.
It'll be useful to see what the usage is, and we can revision, revise it, review it again, once, you know, put the actual usage of that area.
Right, so we're gonna do nothing until the next meeting. We'll bring back more information.
Okay.
Great.
Reference, uh, okay, any other questions about municipal park, library? When Road Agent, we were asked to clear the snow and the sidewalk in front of the, uh, the library, to the library. We don't have the equipment to do that, and Mr. Merle made an effort, but he, there are various complaints from the library putting snow places they didn't want it. Now we've damaged the, uh, damaged the bench. They want us to pay for it. It's their, their bench. We thought they should pay for it. Yeah, I, I proposed to stay on the incident fund to keep it up, but I, that was just a proposal.
My, my idea on this, I know I took it off the agenda, um, you know, the, the library, they, they don't pay for plowing. And they're, they're not even supposed to do that portion because it's a walkway. I mean, and Mark trying to do his due diligence going, hey, how can we help out? Um, and you know, if it's two o'clock in the morning, snow and hailing, and you know, if something accidental happens, I think all the years that we've been doing it, showing good faith and trying to help out and be the better person, I do believe there's enough funds in the library that, you know, if they need a hundred dollars for a bench, it can come out of their fund. Also because the library hasn't been easy, um, doing their updates, you know, with the patio and whatnot, and not talking to our, you know, highway department, being like, hey, where do you guys put snow? You know, and if we put a patio here, is this gonna put a, put a, you know, a, a kink in the belt? And I don't know, I just don't think it should come out of the incident fund. I think the highway department does a great job, and, you know, and it's just, it's not, you know, it would be like helping out a neighbor, and, you know, and, uh, you know, you broke his shovel, and now he's gonna go, hey, you owe me a shovel. I, I don't think that's a, a good atmosphere to, to have amongst the departments, and that's why I wanted to bring it up, talk about it.
That's a good point. Uh, it also suggested that probably, obviously, we don't have the equipment to do that, so, uh, they, they have coast stowed in, they have people that can do this in, in the future, future snow events, that becomes their responsibility. It should have been all along. Where the money comes from, it all comes from the taxpayer's pocket.
Yeah, no.
I, I appreciate.
They also got, you know, twenty thousand last year from the town. You know, I just see it's there and, you know, why, why punish, or not that he's really getting punished, but, you know, why, why would you fault somebody for, for trying to do good and then be like, oh, now yell me? That's just not, not good practice in my book.
Right. I understand your.
The other issue I have with that also is that, uh, I personally don't like where they put the shed because it covers up the, uh, handicap, uh, parking space. Not only am I worried about myself, but worried about other individuals in town that come and do that. I don't know, uh, how Mark, uh, worked it out with them, or if it was worked out with them to, uh, put that there, but, uh, you know, we might wanna look into that at the same time and discuss moving it back or sideways or what have you. Let's go back to the plow. In the years, in the, in the past, I don't recall the bench being that close to the walkway. So, I mean, if you put the bench that close to the walkway, you should accept the responsibility of paying for it. I don't think that we, the select board, should be paying for the bench. If we knock over a lot of these mailboxes, this, you know, if they're within that eighteen inches from the side of the road, then, then it's not, that it was illegally put, so that's, that's something I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is that bench. So I, I, I could not at all consciousness ask that they pay for the bench.
So. I hear what you're saying. I, I agree with you. I think though that, you know, what kind of precedent are we starting? Because, you know, accidents happen, and there's no finger pointing, there's no blame. It's all town money. And so if, you know, the, the plow hits something on the new town hall or school or any, anywhere, the town will repair it or help out. That's just what we do. So it just seems like accidents happen. I, I, I don't have an issue trying to help them out with broken bench. From an incident fund, which is, goes towards unexpected events.
Jim? I think this, you know, just to echo what George said, it sets a precedence being like, okay, if we damage a mailbox, now we're gonna get out there and buy mailboxes. You, you know what I mean? And, and that's what it sets. And because we know winter is coming, right? Okay, what does everybody do in New England? We get ready for winter, whether it's bringing in wood, putting up our stakes, our markers. If you have something close to the pavement, you don't wanna get hit, and/or you move it. You know, at those bike racks in the way, the sheds in the way, you know, I, I think there, there needs to be a discussion with the library and the highway department, and maybe they can come together on, hey, you know, prep for winter. This is what, you know, this is the best-case scenario because we're, we're trying to work together with departments, not point the finger at it and, oh, well, it's, you know, we've got a fund for it, so let's just do it. No, it's, you know, it's setting a precedence going, okay, you know, and if we broke this, then we owe Joe Blow down the street, and we owe him a mailbox because, you know, that got there. Or somebody else drove by with a plow and hit it, and it wasn't even one of our guys, and we still gotta replace it. That's, that's my feeling. I know it's a hundred bucks, but I thought it was pretty petty coming up to this, cause I.
Oh, and I, I, you know, I agree with you on that, but I think that as a town, things will break, accidents will happen, and we do pay for things, so.
Right, and I'm sure if we hit the side of a building with a plow, I'm sure that would go through insurance, not over a hundred dollar. I mean, if we, if we broke the, the golden goose, uh, bench that was handmade, and, you know, it was a twenty thousand dollar bench, uh, yeah, you know, it, it might be a different story, but I'm sure it also wouldn't be placed so close to, you know, uh, with a part of, uh, equipment to get to it.
Library trustee. Would be all right to have her.
I have, I have no comments.
Susan, still, come off of, if you'll come off of mute, be happy to hear you.
Hi, this is, uh, somebody else. Did you call on me?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, well, first of all, I would ask, uh, Mr. Mantrick, were you able to share the email I sent you with the rest of the board?
Yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody had information, and I'm, I am new to the trustee board since March. Of course, I had a meteor revised into the chair seat the moment I was appointed. So I can't speak to some of the history, but, um, just a little bit of history, there is a memorandum of understanding between the town and the library. It looks like it was last executed in, uh, twenty eleven. And it's a document we probably would all be well-served to review and, uh, make some revisions. It does indicate in that MOU that the library is apparently responsible for snow removal. At what point the public works department took that on, I really don't know. So I can't speak to that, and some of you, I think, are making comments, and again, I don't have the information. I don't know if Melissa's on the, on the, uh, line as well, whether she is able to add to that. But whether the, the, um, uh, bench was too close to the walkway where it was positioned, that sort of thing, that's information we don't have. The concern that I expressed to you, um, was, yes, it's all taxpayer money that ultimately is being used, but the, the library budget is distinctly different. It's, uh, not, it's not line item switching between various departments within the town. It's a separate budget. And our budget is, as you know, very slim, uh, most of it being consumed by, by staff. So there's not, the budgets are so different between these departments, it's hard to equate. A hundred dollars is not much, um, to most departments, to us, to the library, it still is a meaningful amount of money for programming and materials and so on. So that is one of the reasons we felt it was worth pursuing this. Melissa had told me when she, um, discovered the bench problem, and I guess she spoke with the road agent, he acknowledged that he was the one who had damaged it, and I, my understanding from Melissa was their agreement between the two of them that, that he would make good on that. And then things have changed since then. So I, I don't think this is the same as a mailbox in a public right-of-way. That, you know, I know when I was on the select board, there were always people who came and complained that their mailboxes got taken out by the plow, and we had to deal with that, but we didn't replace people's mailboxes. So I guess I, I do wanna say I think that's different. I'm concerned about the discussion relative to the shed. And again, that was put in place before I was on the board, but my understanding is that the library discussed that with, I thought, the board and the town administrator as to the placement of that, um, that building. And obviously, it's an effort to deal with lack of space in the library to the extent that we could not, cannot hold programs, we can't hold the, do anything in the small meeting room unless we got a place for storage. And obviously, you know, we're limited on space there. I guess I want to stop at that. It looks like others have some that they want to comment on.
Mr. Scotia had a question.
So it since, say, it's since twenty eleven, since the highway department has been removing snow from the library?
I do not know that to be true.
I don't think it's that long.
Cause, 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 uh, well, even if it was over a year or two years, think about how many thousands of dollars that saved the library. So, you know, whether or not they were asked to do it, it doesn't, you know, I I'm not hearing a complaint being like, hey, you know, we had another contractor lined up, they were supposed to come in and do it, uh, but Mark got to it first. You you know what I mean? It wasn't like Mark was stepping on toes. He was trying to do the right thing. And, you know, try and include it in because, you know, that's gonna save the library a bunch of money, but, um, and it has over the last year or so. Uh, I'm sure he's been doing it for three or four years.
My understanding is what used to happen, um, was the the, uh, custodian did the snow removal. I don't know if the walkway was smaller. We've had turnover in that position, so, uh, it was, uh, I think somewhere along the way it fell off. I don't know how that happened, and I don't know if Melissa knows, when it shifted from something that the the, um, library was taking care of. Not that they hired somebody to do it, but that they were taking care of it within the budget. And when the the, um, public works department took that over, I don't know that history. It would be worth finding out. One, and and just on that issue, um, Melissa and I have talked further about that. And it is in in the agreement. Unless we change that agreement, we will need to look at either, um, uh, purchasing a snow blower and how to store that or hiring a third party contractor, which personally I think is maybe a better idea. I worry about, um, a a custodian doing heavy shoveling. I don't think that's, um, the best, you know, best use of their skills. I would worry about workers' comp claims, quite honestly, um, because it's a pretty big walkway. But that's sort of going forward. We need to look at how are we going to take care of that going forward. So my, obviously, I felt that, yes, we could replace the bench. Um, and one of the things that's challenging for the library is we use a lot of volunteer effort and a lot of volunteer dollars. And it seems a shame to have to use those dollars to replace something that was damaged by another department. And not, and again, we appreciate that the effort of the highway department was to clear the walk and to provide access to the library, and we appreciate that.
Yeah, and but they've done that for for at least a couple of years now, and now we're gonna, we're gonna demand money out of them. I just don't see that that's great practice, but you have your opinion and I have mine.
Is Melissa out there in the cyberspace?
I do not see her on the meeting electronically.
Whoever S is was was blinking.
That was.
Susan, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Now I see it.
Thank you, Susan. Appreciate it. Appreciate your comment, too. So, please, come down to this. Do you want to make a motion to pay for it out of the incident fund or not comment at all?
I'd like to make a motion not to pay for this out of the incident fund and have the library pay for it themselves.
Uh, our our rules prohibit us from making negative motions.
How is that negative?
But it's the negative words, sir. It's just, it's it's just our rules that we have from on the board. We all have to have.
Well, how, so if, so. How can we word that?
Okay, what I'm gonna say to you is if you turned around and made a motion to pay it, then you'd have to get a second.
Okay.
And and if you, then they have to have a vote. So the vote can be no by everyone that's there or yes, two to two, whatever whatever it's gonna be, but you won't be making a negative motion. Select, I I select, the select board rules say that. So.
So.
You understand what I'm saying, Mr. Chair?
I I agree with you.
Thank you. I know you do. I know. Just, but I have to cover myself too by going to him.
Yep, he's the boss. If you chose, you could make your motion that library, the library pay for it.
Yeah, I make the motion that the library pay for their damaged bench.
We have a second.
Second.
Bailey, second. Any other discussion? Vote. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so.
So it does not pass.
That's right.
But absent another motion, this decision still hasn't been made, so nothing will happen.
Okay.
Okay, well, we'll wait until we got it.
So this has to go.
Would you like to make another motion? Is there a motion that the nay voters would like to propose that they like better?
Okay, I'll 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 propose a motion that I suggest. I propose that the, uh, use one hundred dollars in the incident fund to repair the repair the bench.
Well, I would second that.
Seconding. All right. We've had enough discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
Heck, still haven't got it. Keep my ideas, sir.
Uh, resident Doug Winter, fifty-four, Rossdale Lane.
Could you come up here so other people, so the people?
I mean, I want to say what you should do. Maybe you could just compromise and go fifty fifty. Somebody make a motion to do that. Get three people to say yes.
Slow again. Oh, my goodness.
Close enough.
That's it. I don't have any cigars.
So we could bring it forward at the next meeting when we have five members and.
Maybe that would be the.
There we go.
There you go. I know what's gonna happen to five members, so we're just just.
Okay, go ahead. We're, everyone's commenting.
Okay, uh, your your vote shouldn't be taken the wrong way by anybody that wants to write a check right here tonight and pay for it out of their own fund. So you're, so I I understand. You say no, I might agree with it, but that doesn't prevent me if I want to write a check and put it right in there again.
Exactly. Perfect. Thank you. Okay. We'll bring it up some other time. We'll bring it up the next meeting. Okay, uh, the other new uh, was considering the June twenty-seventh meeting.
So historically, the select board has, uh, gone to one meeting a month through the summer months. Um, uh, we kind of waited to see what was going on to make sure that that wouldn't interrupt any planned activities. Uh, as it stands right now, I don't have anything on the agenda for the June twenty-seventh meeting. Um, so I would propose that, uh, talked with Chair Mantrick, um, and we would propose, um, the select board's consideration for canceling that meeting. Um, that said, there might be, uh, decisions that the select board should make relative to the petition calling for a special meeting. Uh, the select board could handle that in a few different ways, uh, absent meeting again on the twenty-seventh. First, the select board could delegate to the chair, um, to work with staff and identify dates. Uh, that will really be the 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 bulk of any discussion and decision making. Or the select board, uh, could set a, um, the discuss the scheduling of anything, um, through email communication without violating the right to know law since scheduling and logistics isn't allowable, uh, use of communication outside of a meeting. Um, and so those are the, uh, the the points. Happy to answer any questions?
Sure.
I am asking the question, Mr. Chairman. So if if we were to do this, we would say that, uh, uh, we would have, uh, we would cancel, uh, one meeting in June, and then in July, we would pick either the eleventh or the twenty-fifth or the eighth or the twenty-second.
Well, Mr. Bailey, the twenty-fifth of July is already kind of a non-business meeting because that's our strategic planning session.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm just asking if if a motion would be made that we cancel the meeting on the twenty-seventh, the twenty-fifth, and the twenty-second.
I would only propose, you're welcome to make whatever motion you'd like. I would only propose to cancel the meeting on the twenty-seventh of June. I would leave the rest of the meetings. And if we wanted to make a future decision, we could, once we saw what business needed to be conducted by the town.
I'm glad, I'm glad I didn't make a motion. I'd be disappointed.
We're gonna need to take care of that on the twenty-seventh or no? But we were.
Well, that was the question.
So essentially, what the town will have to do, that'll be submitted to the supervisors, the checklist, to verify, uh, signatures and addresses, make sure folks are registered voters. Then it'll be turned back over to the select board. Uh, the first step is the select board will have to schedule a deliberative session and a voting session. Um, generally, that would be something that staff would kind of take the lead on. It wouldn't necessarily, the staff being the town clerk and the moderator and the supervisor of the checklist, all the folks that will have to put these meetings together and coordinate them. And so it could be that our, at our July, uh, meeting, the, um, staff make a presentation and present the decisions that were made if the board authorizes the chair to, you know, sign off on date selections as recommended by staff.
So we can go either way.
And there are statutory limits to how soon it can happen anyways, um, because folks have to have an opportunity, uh, to come in and register to vote if they're not already registered. Um, it has to be noticed a certain amount of time in advance, and there has to be a certain amount of time in between the deliberative session portion and the ballot voting session portion.
I just didn't know where he was so hot to trot tonight to say, I want to be on the next board meeting, and then we're canceling one. I don't want it to look like we're canceling it because of him, you know what I mean? Might be taken that way, but I just wanted to make sure that we're good on that that note. I know I've accused myself from everything, but I just want to make sure that it's a hundred percent transparent out there, so it can't be twisted.
It's nothing to think about, gentlemen.
Yeah. So, um, we want to cancel that meeting, basically, the question. And how do we want to be prepared to handle when this, once we get the word from the supervisor, the checklist, then we need to, need to make a set of time for the deliberative session.
Because.
Do we know how long that process takes? Because if we're gonna talk it about now, or if we're gonna wait, you know, till next week or something, and then talk about it, then have it, you know what I mean?
We can, again, the scheduling, we can do administratively.
Okay.
Legally.
It's your ship, brother.
Yeah, well, need to need to concurrence of the whole, whole board to do it that way.
Yep.
I'm fine with, uh, logistically scheduling via, you know.
So, so we, the motion, the motion, we should have a motion to uh, cancel the June twenty-seventh meeting, which was already on the agenda. That wasn't something that came up just in the last few minutes.
Correct.
No prejudice being shown.
Nope, but as long as we have it out there, it's out there, you know? I just want to make sure it's clear.
So we need a motion to do that. And then, uh, again, I don't think we need a motion to do the administrative part of.
Okay, so. A motion to cancel the, as planned or discussed, the the June, uh, twenty-seventh meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Um, select board reports. I've got a listen here. Mr. Gibson.
Townlands will meet this Saturday. They did not have a meeting in May. Uh, the twenty-sixth, uh, Conservation Commission met, and, um, they're doing a lot of work on the Trails, uh, Tracker Program, Jack Gail Tracker Program. Jack Gail's put a lot into, um, this exciting program. I don't know how much. Okay. Right, so I don't want to like, that's a secret or surprise, um, but they're doing a lot of great stuff on the, uh, Trails Committee, uh, Conservation to get people to use the trails and, uh, some exciting programs, uh, coming up. And, uh, so keep your eyes out for that.
Rec Department, they got summer camps, um, obviously pushing towards their goals for the billion they want to do, and their recruits doing their thing.
Very good. Mr. Bailey.
I was, uh, not available to do, uh, the CBA or the, uh, library due to illness. I have nothing to report.
Sure. Uh, school board had their last meeting of the school year. They had a champion of children's award to Kelly Dussette, recognition, New Hampshire Education Excellence Award to Doris Barnes, retired teacher, lifetime achievement award to Pam Lindsay, and Barrington School Foundation Teacher of the Year, Jeff Darrell. Should congratulate them.
Yes.
I think, yes, Mr. Bailey.
At at the next meeting, would you ask, uh, not just for maybe for the boards, notice that on the news lately, no matter what what you listen to, uh, there's been talk about, uh, school safety, and I want to know, has this school board or the past school boards, uh, used up all of the money available to them, or do they have a balance in their fund that the federal government gave for safety for the schools? I hope you can understand what I'm asking you. Because, you know, if we have to do more, we should be able to do it.
The next school board meeting will be toward the end of July, so.
That'll be fine.
Yeah, um, and I know that there's been conversation between the school board and, uh, our police department security.
Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not asking pretty details. I'm just asking for the balance. Because I I know how it affects everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we know if they're gonna be implementing any of the training that the PD has available?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
That was not addressed at the meeting. I don't know the answer to it. There it is, training available.
Yes.
Federal money to that. Uh, the, uh, transfer station uh, meeting I missed, but, uh, according, according to the notes and the conversation, um, I would like, and if we talked about on my consent agenda concerning, um, user fees, uh, because we're making, uh, something like thirteen hundred dollars, uh, from the, from the metal uh, for this new contract, and also the, um, and they want the transfer station to close twenty-third, the afternoon of the twenty-third of July, same time as the parade.
Two hours, two hours before the parade starts.
Yeah. And that's about, about it. The public, okay.
Do you need a motion to allow it to close or just a consent?
I think we did that on a consent agenda.
Now, both those items are on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just raising. Public comment, uh, out of time for another public comment. Again, you're, uh, the total of fifteen minutes. You have, each person has three minutes to make their presentation. Again, if you give your name and answer.
Thank you very much. I have a public comment to talk about the, uh, police department. As most of you know where I live, and I must say that, uh, it's been very enjoyable sitting on my back porch when that police car was up on one twenty-five because you could just hear the slow traffic coming and everything else. And then when that police car is not there, you could, you could hear the motorcycles is mainly what I'm talking about, drive up real slow. And then when they reach my street and there's not that shadow in the parking lot, boy, you can hear them crank it on and down they go. So I just want to thank them for the days of privacy that I had. I appreciate that. Thank you very much, Jay.
George, they sound good.
Well, they were, they were right. There was only one, there was only one person that was out of tune. Yep, Kristen was perfect just down there. I don't know that much.
Paul Mosteller, again, eighty-three Washington Street. Uh, can the town administrator give us an update on the town hall? They're gonna meet the deadlines and the appropriation of eight hundred and fifteen thousand coming back to the town because of the federal grant? Am I correct on that?
Hundred.
Not entirely. So the first question about deadlines, we're still on track. We're still scheduled to move the week of July twenty-fifth. Um, in the construction world, anything can happen, but we're checking all the boxes as we move on. The team's been doing a great job. To your question about the appropriation, so that will simply be bonding authority that I don't expect the town will execute on. So the Warren article to approve the new town hall was one million twenty-five thousand dollars into a capital reserve from unassigned fund balance. That money will be spent. The, uh, second portion of that was to authorize the issuance of a bond in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And given the one point five million dollars of direct federal funding, uh, my expectation is that the town will simply not, uh, issue that bond for the eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, let that lapse. And so there won't be, it's not like there'll be extra eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, and that money couldn't be used for anything else anyways because it was appropriated specifically for the town hall. So the, you know, it's not like we could. specifically for the Town Hall, so, the, you know, it's not like we could, the Select Board could say, "Well, let's issue that bond and use another $800,000 on paving," because it's voters that authorize the issuance of a bond. It was for the Town Hall, fortunately, because the $1.5 million grant doesn't look like we're going to need the money, and so, it will just lapse.
Between now and ribbon cutting, change orders, material costs, does that run in front of the Board at all, or is that, is there an allowance?
It's all design build, so the total cost right now is about $2.5 million, and that's the, that is on budget with what the update, you know, presented once construction actually started with increased material costs and everything like that. So there were allowances to, to cover the unexpected winter conditions and other, I don't say issues, but, you know, challenges any construction project faces.
Did the state sign off on the road, coming in from 125?
So I believe your question is, is the larger development, did they receive their DOT permit? They did.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Jack Gail, 798 Berry River Road. Just a comment on what the Town Administrator said earlier, it wasn't just quoting of a rule or a law. The Town Government puts processes in place so we can make things happen. I was the part of the administration of a Land Owners Association in the community here in town, we had people violating the rules, parking cars in our land such that the UPS guy had to do a 23-point turn to get off of a dead-end road. We had someone parking cars on a lot in violation of the rules about having unregistered vehicles. In worst case, we had a landowner who decided to set up a commercial campground on his lot, and we found campfires with no ability to put the fire out, constantly running generators because there was no power provided to the site, and later hikers found human extramen and waste on the land, because he provided no facilities of any kind for his campers. The proper forms were drafted by himself and another, we provided pictures, quoted state laws, all available on the machines that we have in front of us, submitted them. All three were rectified because we followed the rules. I would caution anyone that says they can just talk to anybody in the Town and get something taken care of. I had a discussion with the Selectmen this weekend, I didn't ask them to do that. There's a process, I would, wouldn't want a government where something you learned at the diner, or at History Day this weekend, all of a sudden becomes action by Town officials. We can document these and do them the proper way, the political process would not be a way to do it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other comments from those present? I can't see underneath. Very good. I don't see any on online, if you're online, you'll raise your hand, we can recognize you. If you're on telephone, post star six, we can recognize you and hear your comments. Oh, sorry, Mr. Walker's here, apologize.
But if there's somebody else ahead of me.
I didn't see you come.
As part of the Tricentennial Committee, I just wanted to bring the folks up to date and the people that might be listening out in the audience. Very successful History Day that we took part in with the Historical Society on, we, we were kind of responsible for the chicken barbecue, there were some disappointed people that left there without chicken, because it, we greatly overestimated, underestimated the demand for the chicken, and, you know, that, that has a lot to do with the weather, we had to throw a dot at the wall and say, "This is how much we're going to get," but, and hope that we sell it all. Thankfully, we did sell it all, which is a whole lot better than standing there 50 or 60 plates in your hand of chicken and having nothing to do with it, but, that very successful day was successful for the Historical Society, was successful for the committee, we were able to get a lot of information out to people, and I think the very, very, very huge turnout, they, they, they put, they put on an excellent program, and caduce to the Historical Society for being the main driving force behind that. Our next big thing for us is the parade, we have a commitment right now of over 60 entries, it's going to be a huge parade, we're, we're pretty excited about it, that I, I hope we don't double the population of Barrington for two or three hours, that, that, but, but any rate, looking forward to that. We have a number of static displays set up, including an civil 1700, 1700 Civil War encampment that will be going on through the weekend, we currently have, as long as the weather is good, we have a military helicopter coming in that will be a kind of a touch of truck, or touch of vehicle, I should say, a medical helicopter coming in from Dart, we have a replica of, I don't remember the show Emergency, because it predates my age, but there was a show called Emergency Squad 51, there's a gentleman up in Maine that recreated that truck, that will be on display that day, so it's kind of old, old, old-style EMS version of the newer, the newer helicopter, and there's a, there's a number of other things, and that really is going to kick off what is our big week, from July 23rd to final follow-up with a super duper display over on Smoke Street, behind the Highway Garage on July 30th. So, we're really excited for it, we're looking, looking forward, it's going to be a big time, and we, we hope that people are enjoying this 300th year.
Please, before you, yeah, before you leave.
Chief, first question is, what's the route?
The route is gonna, so part of the parade will start up on Ramsdale Lane and work their way down to Redemption Road, where most of the marching units and the walking units and stuff will be lined up at Turbo Cam, they'll come up to a stop there, that group will come out of Turbo Cam, get down Route 9 to Malago Road, turn on, turn on the Malago Road and into the back entrance of the elementary school where they'll disband from there.
Okay. Next question concerns parking, where parking isn't, people going to be able to be bused from that parking, or do they have to plan on walking from the area to get on the parade route? These are questions that were asked to me, and I couldn't answer.
So, we're, we're currently, that's currently our big project right now, is looking at parking, the Cemetery Trustees have graciously agreed to allow parking in the, in the field behind the Historical Society, we anticipate, I'm, I'm five or six hundred cosmic park there, and then, we've identified a couple other spots, but, obviously, off-site parking, there'll be some sort of a shuttle to get people back and forth, we're obviously going to, as we get closer to this, to encourage people to carpool as much as possible, and, and limit the number of vehicles that are, that we've got to try to find parking for.
My question to you is, has your, you know, committee turned around and contacted the two churches, see if they could use their parking lots?
That, that's on the list, and actually, we haven't ruled out the fact that we would get all three churches, not all four churches.
Okay, all right, thank you for your help.
Are you rappelling out of either helicopter?
I get thrown out of one, but I don't know if I'm going to be rappelling, but I may get thrown.
They need a helping hand.
Recreation Director Jessica Tennis has her hand up.
Oh, Jessica, please.
I just wanted to just quickly provide an update on the town playground, there was a little bit of a delay in the installation of the shade structures, however, they are slated to be installed tomorrow, we have the fence being reinstalled on Thursday, so our plan is to reopen that, the playground area on Friday of this week, so I just wanted to just provide an update for the Select Board as well as the community.
Thank you. Any other comment? Thank you, Jessica, anyone else online? Again, those on telephone, star six. I don't see any other comments.
I do not.
Okay.
Sir.
I do think we need to have non-public sessions.
Just going to close public comment, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, closed.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to go to the non-public.
Second.
For the purposes of personnel?
Yeah.
Second.
RSA 918, colon, three, area, or, comment two, purposes of personnel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Scotia, you have public-- oh wait, we have to open up public.
We're back in public.
Okay.
We need a motion to appropriate seventy thousand dollars out of the ARCA fund for police retention bonuses to be administered by police chiefs and the town administrator.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Without objection, as so ordered.